Good evening and welcome to the November 7th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We start with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Vu.
(Inaudible) Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with Request to Speak cards.
As a reminder to everyone that Request to Speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write Item A on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. With that, we will go to General Administration Functions. Item A, Presentations by the Public or matters none of the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. Is there any public comment? I don't have any Request to Speak cards. We'll move on to Item B, Correspondence and Staff Communication for the Planning Commission's Secretary. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, Chair Castillo. Thank you. Just one quick item to note, you should have a memorandum in front of you from Ms. Allen regarding Item Number Two. We'll address that in more detail once we get that item, but I do want to make sure the commission has that.
Thank you. Disclosure of Ex parte Communications, that's Item C. We'll start on my left. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Yes, Chair, and abundance of transparency. I did, I shared a daycare with one of the staff of the applicant for Item Two, and upon news of the project coming forward, I did have a conversation with her about the project, not about any of the details, but did, upon notice of the project becoming public, did have a discussion with her about the project.
Commissioner Berliner?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Sablon?
Nothing to disclose.
On my right, Commissioner Austin?
Nothing.
Commissioner Leonard?
I spoke with the applicant about some of the external materials on Item Number Two.
Awesome. Commissioner Vu? Nothing to report? And I have nothing to report myself. With that, Consent Agenda, consideration of approval of the minutes for the September 19th, 2019 Commission Meeting, is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Sternfeld, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Berliner. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained?
Aye, abstained.
Motion, one abstention by Commissioner Austin. Motion carries. Moving on to regular agenda, Number Two is a public hearing regarding design review for River One Phase One and consideration of Resolution 19-11 PC recommending the City Council approve the proposed design. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Chair Castillo and members of the commission. The item before you involves a public hearing regarding design review for the Phase One of River One and a request for approval of Resolution 19-11 PC with which the Planning Commission would recommend to the City Council that the design review for the project be approved. The project includes a hotel and a residential condominium building. The hotel is proposed to contain 196 rooms, would be approximately 85 feet above grade. The hotel is proposed to include an indoor and outdoor restaurant, fitness studio, ballroom, and rooftop lounge and terrace. And the hotel is proposed to be located on the southeastern portion of the site adjacent to the Riverwalk and Tower Bridge Gateway. The condominium building is proposed to contain 85, or 55 residential units, which include seven townhouses on the first level, six penthouse units on the top floor, and the remaining 42 units would be flats dispersed throughout the building. Residential amenities include a private lounge area and outdoor living room. This building is proposed to be located on the northeastern portion of the site, south of the Ziggurat and adjacent to the Riverwalk, and like the hotel, it's also proposed to be 85 feet above grade. Both buildings would share a courtyard and pool, and both buildings would also share the underground parking garage, which is proposed to contain 198 parking spaces. In terms of the background and regulatory framework, the project is subject to the Rayleigh's Landing River One Development Agreement. There's a section in the DA that requires the city to review and approve the design of the buildings in accordance with the collective standards in the DA. This project is also located in the Washington-Specific Plan Area and is located in Plan Development 30, and both of these documents provide supplemental development standards for the project. In terms of the project design, the hotel building is proposed to feature large glass storefront windows and doors on the ground floor and uppermost levels. The upper levels of the building would include louvers, vertical windows, and woodgrain finished siding. There will be many decorative features on the buildings made out of a variety of materials. The hotel is sited so that the main entrance of the building will be located on the eastern side, which faces Sacramento. The outdoor event space on the second story is located on the eastern side on the second floor, and finally, the rooftop terrace lounge is also on the eastern side. In terms of the condo building, it will feature cement plaster exterior with woodgrain siding, windows that are vertically orientated with balconies and metal railings. The storefront assembly glass windows and doors will be located on the first level, and this building is proposed to be orientated towards the Sacramento River. Access to the project will be from both Tower Bridge Gateway and Third Street. The public access will also extend from Third Street to the Riverwalk on the far northern portion of the site, and this access may require off-site right-of-way acquisition from the Ziggurat parcel. In terms of the conditions of approval, you do have a memo from me on that. There was a condition that was inadvertently left off the conditions of approval, and that had to do with subsequent approvals should there be changes to the, to the project. Staff has written it so that if there are minor changes to things such as colors or minor material swapages, those things would be approved at the staff level. However, if there were items such as significant changes to the footprint, the height of the buildings, et cetera, those would need to be approved still by the council. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and has a more detailed presentation in terms of the design of the buildings for you. Happy to answer any questions now or following the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Commission, would like to hear from the applicant before we ask questions to staff. Okay, great, we can have the applicant come up. Mr. Friedman, how are you?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is going to be fun. Very excited to present this project to you this evening. But before I do, I think that I should tell you just a little bit about the team that's behind the project. My family has joined together with Julie and Mike Thiel, the owners of the Rayleigh's Corporation, and also the owners of the River One site, to co-own and co-develop the site. As you've heard from staff, we're here tonight to present a mixed-use hotel and residential project that we think has the possibility to not only transform the waterfront in West Sacramento, but to transform, you know, our region as a whole. You know, I know that that's a bold statement, but this is truly an incredible site. I'm prejudiced in that, as an owner of the site, you know, I see its attributes better than perhaps others, but when you think about it, it's on the water's edge, next to one of the most iconic structures in our community, the Tower Bridge. It not only has a beautiful relationship to the river, but it's got an intimate view of old Sacramento just beyond, and above that close-in view, you can see the towers in the city of Sacramento. It's an absolutely extraordinary view, and I would defy anybody to find a better river-oriented view in this community. When you have a site like that, there's a tremendous responsibility to do a good job, and to tackle that responsibility, I think we've assembled an extraordinary team. We reached out among many, many architects in the United States that have expertise in designing hotel and resort projects. We interviewed five of them, and we settled on SB Architects, which has a long history of designing some of the most beautiful and evocative resort projects anywhere in the world. I'd ask you, when you get a chance, to go take a look at their website, and you'll see some beautiful, beautiful properties, and they've brought, you know, some of that design intelligence and aesthetic expertise to what, what you're about to see. You'll also see, as we go through the design, that landscape is going to be exceptionally important in this project, and we've hired Surface Design, which is a San Francisco-based landscape architecture and design firm. They were the 2017 recipient of the Cooper Hewitt National Landscape Design Award, and they've been selected by the Smithsonian Institute to do a redesign of the Smithsonian Mall. So, an extraordinary, extraordinary company who's also doing the landscape work for the new Crocker Park expansion. So, incredible, incredible team. In addition to that, you won't hear from them tonight because they're working mostly on the interiors and the branding, but we brought to the table a firm called EDG or Edge that's got a specific expertise in designing hospitality and resort properties and building branding around it. So, even though we're referring to this project tonight as River One, we hope to have a name that, you know, is more evocative of the product and the location and the aspirations that this community, as we go forward.
I apologize, Mr. Friedman. This is the first time that some of these planning commissioners have had the opportunity to meet you, so I think if you wanted, I'm not even sure that you introduced your name, but if you want to give a very brief description of a few of the things you've done that they may notice in West Sacramento, that might be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. I appreciate that. My name is Mark Friedman. I'm the President of Fulcrum Property. Fulcrum is the master developer of the Bridge District in West Sacramento, and among the projects that we've worked on, on the West Sacramento side are the Barn and the Park Moderns, and all of the residential development that you see completed in that area with the exception of the Rivermark, as well as the projects that are currently under construction. The most recent one that we just completed is the Foundry. We're currently under construction with a project called The Bridge that's at the corner of Bridge and Riverfront, and we just submitted applications for what we're, we, Phase Five. It's another apartment project that'll be located at the corner of Fifth and Mill Street. So, when we complete those projects, we'll have completed about 535 residential units in West Sacramento. We love this community. We are great advocates for its attributes, and we see this project, you know, not only as a natural extension of what we've been doing, but, you know, it's an opportunity to really raise the bar. But thank, thank you for that, that prompt. I appreciate it. Let me go back to the project and the site and the team that we've talked about. I'm going to let David Richlousky, who is, you know, the lead architect from SB, you know, describe to you, you know, the specifics of how he's attacked this challenge. He and his team have attacked this, this challenge, but before we do, I want to talk a little bit about the charge that we gave them from a design perspective. We wanted to create something that took unique advantage of this site, of its proximity to nature and its proximity to the city. So, we wanted to be able to attract an audience both to the hotel, you know, and to the residential component of the project, for people who wanted to be right on the doorstep of some of the best cultural amenities that our region has to offer, you know, the Crocker Art Museum, the Train Museum, Golden One Center, you know, the New Science Center, the Future Indian Heritage Center. But we also wanted to create a place that kind of had a moment of zen, that allowed people to, you know, be close to the buzz of the city, but, you know, to also sort of refresh themselves away from nature. We wanted something that was architecturally sophisticated and yet comfortable. And when you sort of think about, you know, those dichotomies, urban and rural, developed and natural, sophisticated and comfortable, you know, it's really kind of a tough needle to figure out, you know, how to, how to thread. But we've been working under the rubric of trying to create an urban resort, and we've given those, you know, that sort of design charge to the team. I think they've done an absolutely extraordinary job figuring out how to take those words and give them physical reality. So, without further ado, let me, let them show you what they've done. Thanks.
Thank you for the introduction, Mark. This is great. Everybody, thank you so much for having, having us here today to discuss the River One design review here. As Mark was saying earlier about the goals of the presentation here and our meeting today, and balancing nature with development, and looking at the city of West Sacramento, symbol up here, we got the, the water, the bridge, and the trees. As we review our presentation here, I think you'll see a lot of those elements merged into not only the planning, but also the material choices and the way that the buildings interact with nature on the property. Before we jump in, I'd like to encourage everybody, this isn't, I don't do well as presentations, I'd like to have dialogues. So, if anybody has any questions about anything that we're showing here, please feel free to voice up and ask questions as we, as we move along.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, certainly. My name is David Richlousky. I'm with SB Architects. I'm an Associate Principal and Lead Designer of our, of our team. So, I just click these.
Thank you.
Oh, I can scroll. Oh, wonderful. Okay, great. So, we'd like to start off by identifying a little bit of side context here for everybody, as Mark addressed later on. The project site is located right here, next to, certainly the most iconic element in the region with the Tower Bridge and its yellow glory here on the Sacramento River, and it's close proximity to downtown Sacramento, the Golden One Arena, Crocker Art, and the development of this Bridge District over here to the south. When we look at our property here, this is Phase One of Two, and I'd like to take a few minutes here and just discuss why we just chose the planning the way we have identified here. When our team came onboard with the initial master planning exercises, we looked at several ways to lay out the project here, and trying to utilize quite possibly the, you know, we have the strongest element of the, of the view towards the east of downtown, taking advantage of the natural beauty of the, of the Sacramento River, but it's also important to notice the importance of these trees. We have several very old sycamore trees here to the south, and we feel, as a design team, nothing really gives a building a sense of place or permanence or, or comfortableness of the, of the site than nestling a project within the natural landscape. So, trying to develop a plan that maintains these trees and exposes them for all their glory and their beauty with the context of our building was very important to us. So, we looked at, as you can see, the, the building here bends a little bit in relation to Tower Bridge Gateway, and we have sensational views of these tree canopies from our hotel guests on this portion of the building. On that note, we also are maintaining this very large and ancient oak tree, and we're bending our, our circulation into the path, or into the project here from Third Street. Going back to talking about how the building is oriented, the way that the hotel and the residential are bent here allows just sensational views to the southeast and to the northeast across the river, really framing the city itself, and promoting views to the city over our amenity terrace, over the public Riverwalk, over the river, and also to the, to the bridge and the city beyond. We'll talk a little bit more about solar orientation and how the buildings are put together a little later in the presentation, but I think what this slide also represents is understanding the environment of Sacramento and how hot it can be in the summer months, and how to develop these buildings in a way that we can protect not only the residents of the property, but also guests and public users from the heat in the later midday and later afternoon sun, with the, the hotel building over here in the south providing shade down to some of our more public-facing amenities. Briefly, we'll talk a little bit about circulation, predominantly vehicular. Most guests or all guests could come down Tower Bridge Gateway and take a right into our drive. This drive takes us up to a very large turnaround with a heritage tree in the center. The way the buildings are developed, we're trying to minimize the amount of curb cuts or entry points and alleviate any kind of confusion to the arrival, so we have one conjoined arrival for both the residential building and the hotel lobby. Guests can come and get dropped off here and then be valeted down a ramp to the parking podium below grade. So, guests and, or sorry, hotel guests and residents alike can travel this way, or they have another option if you're coming eastbound on Tower Bridge Gateway, to take a left on Third Street, come up this road and go directly into the hotel, or into the parking garage. The red lines represent EVA, Emergency Vehicle Access Paths, fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera. They also have the ability to come and go both off of Tower Bridge Gateway as well as Third Street. You see a little hammerhead opportunity here that provides ease of turnaround as well as the required space for, for the latter truck. And then finally, the gold line here shows our service for both the residential and the hotel portion, or portions of the project. Service can come right off of Third Street, hammerhead here, go underneath the podium to bring in deliveries and take out trash. Moving forward to the massing philosophy. Oh, yes, please.
So, I just had a quick question on the entry and movement.
Yes.
So, is there room for bikes and pedestrians in those roadways?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes. So, running parallel, and we'll see this in, in some of the three-dimensional studies we have a little bit later, we're maintaining the main path that is already being developed on Tower Bridge Gateway, and then we're greeting guests from a pedestrian standpoint off the road, and there's a buffer of a series of linear almond trees. So, there's a buffer, very safe buffer between the cars going into the property as well as pedestrians or cyclists coming up to the front entry. The same is true over here with a much more relaxed entry point, you know, it doesn't have the same hustle and bustle of Tower Bridge. Visitors and, and owners can come up this way as well.
Hi, sorry, I have a question too. So, for the Tower Bridge Gateway entrance, how will you control the flow there? Is it just one, one way in? Are people going to be able to make a left as they're heading?
You cannot make a left.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, it's a right turn only in. There's nobody that's, or I should say, no public is allowed to go out of this driveway, however, with EVA, fire trucks and ambulances get to go where they please. Jumping into the massing philosophy, I mean, we are here for approval of the design review, the design package here, so we want to talk a little bit about our philosophy and how these buildings are put together. So, we're going to start here with the residential building. The residential, as was discussed in the preamble, we have a townhome product here that creates a very strong base to the building. We're referring to it as the podium element. Then we have a series of stacked flats that go all the way up to the sixth floor that create the tower or the body of the building. And then we wanted to take the opportunity at arguably the most prominent units at the penthouse and treat them as something special with a very lightweight, lightweight roof that really accents and promotes these, these beautiful views out 360 degrees, frankly, around the site. Then we went further with a little bit of articulation, and we identified and we wanted to promote where the floor plates are. So, we have a series of long horizontal lines that continue throughout the entire building representing the floor plates, and this is a unifying element that you'll see when we talk about the hotel. I think it's important to note that even though these buildings are right next to each other and part of the same Phase One development, they should be of the same family, but they don't want to be twins. Mark was talking about using words like sophistication, sophisticated, elegant, in the way that we went forward with our design, and, you know, both the massing and the material choices really promote those, those words. And so, when we talk about these, these buildings and how they relate to each other, you'll see some unifying design features here that are great accents that, that really make them speak together. And then finally, like all residential buildings, we wanted to make sure that we provided an opportunity for outdoor living. Indoor/outdoor living in this climate is just, you know, a necessary element, and so it also provides a great opportunity to articulate the massing and make the building all the more interesting. When we talk about the hotel massing, similar to the last slide, we talk about the podium. We could see the larger mass in the background, it's a two-story tall element that houses a lot of our front of house features and amenity spaces. Down here, we have a little bit lower podium element that promotes an outdoor function terrace that gives quite possibly unprecedented views across the river to Sacramento, and can give you an opportunity to have functions or weddings that nobody else can have in the area. And then similar to the residential, the body of the building is stacked modules that go up that create the, the general middle of the building, and then we're treating the penthouse level similar to the other side. These are some of the similar massing elements that we talked about that speak together or have these buildings feel like they're part of the same family, but as we see in a few more views, they are distinctly different from each other. We introduced the floor plates, and then one of the defining elements here, you know, we spoke briefly or earlier about, there's like this iconic intersection of elements here at this site between the river, the city views, the bridge, and the, and the trees, and we feel that this building needs to complement those elements and, but still hold its own. And so, we've provided an interesting screening element of these vertical wood louvers on the hotel that work for multiple reasons. There's, there's a privacy opportunity here, as we see the building has an inside angle, and so when those two guest rooms that are looking at the same spot are looking at each other, the vertical louvers provide privacy from people seeing into each other's guest rooms. As the sun travels throughout the day, these vertical, vertical louvers will provide a lot of passive shading to help reduce, you know, solar gain on the building facade. And then one of the more interesting elements from a design standpoint is, even though the building's static and nothing's moving on the building, as, as people travel around the building, the building's facade changes. When you're on a super oblique angle, you don't see any windows, you see the louvers, you see this material. As you come a little bit more to the two-dimensional facade, you start seeing a little bit more glass, and the louvers are these little accents, but when you're right on, the louvers almost disappear. They look like little joints, kind of like what we're seeing behind you guys on the, on the wall here. And then as you travel on, the, the opposite occurs. So, the building is always moving even though it's static, which we think is very, very interesting. So, here we have an aerial view looking over the Sacramento River back to the property. You know, you can really see the massings, you know, hugging this amenity space in the middle that has the pool, has a food, indoor/outdoor food and beverage offering over here on the southeast corner, underneath the canopy of the existing trees. We have a break in the building. The break in the building's important so that when we think about the advancement of Phase Two, we still allow some peek-a-boo vantage points from Phase Two between these two buildings out to the skyline and the river. We spoke briefly about this upper-level roof terrace, this, or sorry, function lawn above the F and B offering. I can't really think of a better space to be in this area. I can't really think of a better space to be in this area if we wanted to have a wedding or an outdoor event of some sort and imagining the sun setting and seeing the light kind of glisten off of downtown Sacramento and you're out there in a balmy, you know, summer or spring evening, just watching the activity go on across the river. You're close enough where you can walk there in a couple of minutes, but you're also far enough away that you feel like your own, your, your own little respite, you know, the idea of the urban resort. You're, you're walking distance away, you can see it, but you're very comfortable in your little alcove. Jumping into building plans, we talked about the podium. Podium has all the parking, also has the shipping and receiving area. Residential parking is dedicated to the north over here, while the rest of the area down here is for the hotel use. Coming up to the floor plan, Tower Bridge Gateway is over here to the south. Third Street back here, well, way back here. And then we have the public riverwalk right down here to the, to the east. We talked about the drop-off, the drive-up. Here we can see that a public or the pedestrian path. So those who are coming from across the bridge can come down Tower Bridge Gateway on that sidewalk that we had there and thread the needle between the almond trees and the building facade to the arrival. We have one joint entry here. Part of our background in hospitality and developing resorts, destination resorts, regardless if they're across the world or they're here in our backyard, is this defining point of when you enter the resort. You know, people are coming here for relaxation, people go to resorts to, you know, get away from the world. And we like to have that identifying threshold that people go through. And our threshold here is this water feature where you come off, if you're coming to the hotel, the valet will take your car down to parking. You walk underneath this trellis into a grove of olive tree, olive trees. And there's water features on either side of you. There's an audible kind of distraction as well as a visual one. And once you cross over that threshold of the water, you're, you're in the resort underneath, underneath this bosque of olive trees, looking at a filtered view of down, of downtown. But before you get to the overall view, you get to walk through this beautiful courtyard that our friends at Surface has developed. And then you overlook the amenity lawn and then over the pool and then out to the view. Over here to the south, we have our lobby spaces. Those transition into our food and beverage indoor/outdoor dining opportunities. We also have a separate entrance through this courtyard for those who want to go to the, directly to the restaurant. To the right, we have our townhomes, our residential amenity. The main entry for residences is located here in the inside corner. So as residences come in or guests for the residents come in, they get the full experience of walking through the olive bosque, past the amenities and through a very subtle but very well-designed and detailed door into the friends' abodes. Going up to level two, here as we have in the hotel side is our function space. We've, we've spoken a little bit about the function lawn and the advantages that are afforded to us by elevating this, you know, having the ability to be, you know, approximately 15 feet or so above grade and being able to oversee the bridge and the, the river and the city and yet still be part of the resort but separate through the vertical separation. So there can still be other elements happening. People could be enjoying the pool or enjoying some time in this space down in the lawn or even at dinner. But being up above them gives you the privacy that you would want for a multitude of functions. And then to the right, we start stacking our residences. We're looking at some of the second floors of the townhomes and some more flats are being introduced down here to the east. This is the typical floor plan of the body of the building. We talked about the massing earlier and how there's approximately four floors or so of stacked modules. This is where the majority of the hotel rooms are located, and then we start stacking our condos. Seventh floor, penthouses are all located here, taller ceilings, lot more glass, affording wonderful views. Over here to the hotel, we took the exterior wall and offset it in approximately four feet. Having the envelope squeezed in a little bit at the top really punctuates the, the top of the building. And you'll see in some other of the massings and the rendering, it's a very thin hat. You know, it's a visor that wraps around the building. It's a pretty impressive element both during the daytime, but at the nighttime, you can imagine that being uplit and having this really beautiful glow on the underside of the eve. We also have our roof lounge offering up here that will really, once again, I hate to say the word again, but unprecedented views to Sacramento. Roof plan, going into the building sections, we, as I discussed and told the stories, these technical drawings just help reaffirm how the building uses stack on top of each other. So if we're looking at the hotel, over here, this is a section taken through the food and beverage oper, uh, uses, the function space and the rest of the hotel. So we talked about how the penthouse jogs back a little bit, creating that reveal and promoting the underside of the eve of the roof. The function space pokes out just a little bit as a glass box for the pre-function space that allows, you know, a unique opportunity to exit the building onto the lawn and being elevated by the rest of the spaces. And then we have our food and beverage offerings down here at grade. Second section is taken more through the typical conditions of the building. This is very close to the arrival. We can see once again, the body of the building is sitting proud of the base of the building. And the top is also set in just a little bit for massing purposes. The residential, we can see that we're stacking our uses very efficiently, straight up and down. Our parking garage for all residences are below. Townhomes, level one, level two, and then stacked condos from level three through level seven. Another quick section through here, just identifying how the building morphs and changes, you know, depending on what side you're on. This is a more typical section showing the condos on either side, double-loaded with a corridor running down the middle. Elevations, we're going to talk about materials and perspectives. So we just thought we'd throw in a couple elevation sheets here, just talking about the general massings of the building. We spoke earlier about that these are, these are family members, not twins. From a massing standpoint, they, they are 85 feet tall. But you can see that they speak together with this very subtle and sophisticated material palette. We're using various shades of cool and warm grays. The introduction of some rusted metal material and wood really gives it a very nice warmth to the building. This is a view looking as if you were standing on the riverwalk, looking back at the buildings. Our amenitized space is right here in the middle with the lawn and pool. Here's our food and beverage offerings and our lawn is just above. So material studies, starting with the hotel. This is an aerial perspective, looking back at the inside corner from the northeast, looking southwest. We have a, you know, when we started looking at materials of the building after looking at the massing, I think it's important for us to note that the building is, is fairly simple. There's not a lot of moves, it's not very confusing, it doesn't want to be loud, it doesn't want to be over the top. And so as we started doing our material choices, we wanted to be very selective on our material choices. It doesn't want to be too busy, there doesn't want to be a lot of flash or bright colors here. It just wants to balance with the nature. So the Tower Bridge is bright yellow. That's the focus element with the existing landscape. We have these beautiful trees, you know, there's a lot of warmth in those trees, the greens and the browns. This wants to complement what's already there, it doesn't want to necessarily compete with it. So when we look at what we're doing here in the material choices, a large body of the building is wrapped in an exterior gray cladding. When you get down to where people are going to be able to touch the building and interact with the building more, we put a little bit more interesting texture materials. So you see we have a board-form concrete tile here around the food and beverage offering. We talked about the metal tile, we're using that in very interesting accents, you know, as planters, integrated planter boxes, as well as feature walls. And there's portions of the building being a hotel that have very blank facades. And we want to make it look really interesting. So by utilizing this special material along with our louvers, we have a very, what, what could normally be recognized as a boring facade, it's very animated and very, very interesting here with the massing and the material choices we chose. I like this perspective because it talks about the base of the building a lot more. This is the arrival side. Imagine Tower Bridge Gateway is running approximately east-west here. The driveway is coming up this way. We had those almond trees lined up right here. But what I think most people would expect for a building of this size is not to have a glass base. And so we thought, let's flip the script on this a little bit and provide this idea of a window wall system that creates a glass box that supports the body of the building. And so you can imagine coming in here in the evening, if visitors want to come to West Sacramento and spend, you know, the weekend, perhaps go to a nighttime Kings game, they come in, you know, right before the tip and the sun has already set. You can imagine like an amber glow or something coming out of the base of the building, backlighting those, those planted trees. And it could be really a very nice introduction to their, their urban escape. Taking a look at the residential, utilizing some of the similar color palettes. You know, we're accenting the horizontal striations of the buildings, the floor plates with a metal trim. Where our townhomes are, we're accenting that with a darker plaster material. We know that, like, once again, the heat and the sun can be pretty oppressive here in Sacramento. So, you know, fortunately for the people in the body of the building, they have inset balconies so they can take some shield from the sun. But down here at the base of the building, we're providing a wood and steel trellis that's two stories tall that protects not only the interior space from, you know, early afternoon sun, but it also protects the glorified outdoor terraces that all the townhomes have, as you can see around here. This building does not have the vertical louvers, but we still want to introduce the warmth of a wood material. So you'll see that with all the balcony and terrace insets, we're proposing a wood cladding on the inside wall there. You know, it's important to recognize where people are going to be spending time and what makes them feel comfortable. Mark talked about comfortability earlier. And so having those warm inviting materials where people can interact and touch was very important. So here we have a view of what the public may experience. Those who are walking up and down the riverwalk, let's pretend somebody is coming out for lunch from CalSTRS, walking south down the riverwalk. Our project is fully developed. We have the residential building to the right with the more active lounge space. We have a big buffer in here with the pool, the pool terrace. And then in the distance, we see the hotel with the combination of the interesting glass panel, the vertical louvers and the rusted metal panels. I think something else that's really nice about this image, it, it's an inviting and comfortable distance from the riverwalk. And as you can, excuse me, and what you can see is that we're slightly elevated from natural grade here. So you have this sense of privacy when you're in the amenity space, when you're on the pool terrace. But you're not so high that you're segregating yourself from the public. There's a very human scale between those who are on the amenity space and those who are walking down the riverwalk to jump into the food and beverage outlet for, for lunch, for a cup of coffee at breakfast or maybe happy hour after work.
Just one question, is that the only, that small gate there, is that the only entrance for the river?
We, we, we have two, we have two points. This location is for residents only. So this would perhaps be a key fob or a key gate. The public entry would be down over here for the hotel. So imagine, you know, if you were a resident, how, how much of a bummer it would be if you can only go out your front door and have to walk around. This gives all the residences a backdoor entry and exit opportunity. We really like this view. This is the story of the sunset and a slightly lifted perspective at the arrival to the hotel. Over here to the right, we see the glow of the Tower Bridge. We see the beautiful canopy of the sycamore trees. And once again, the building is not intended to overpower the impressiveness of these trees. We will treat the area here with natural landscape, it'd be a very beautiful, natural experience and balanced to the building. We see our flowering almond trees here that creates a very nice buffer between the pedestrian and bike arrival and the vehicular arrival. Here's our heritage tree that we talked about. This creates a really nice canopy, a little bit of a buffer to the buildings in the distance. Once again, just giving the visitors the idea that they are coming to like an urban oasis or an urban resort. You know, here we can see how the building is uplit at the base, you know, the base is squeezed in a little bit, promotes the body of the building. The louver panels really give a great texture to the building. The articulation of the roof, once again, the idea of the visor and uplighting that, the glow, the window wall system. Once again, it's the unexpected architecture when you, when you come in. One more thing to note here, you know, we can see that we have a wall down here. This is where the entry and exit is for the hotel shipping and loading and receiving areas are down below. So once again, just getting all the back-of-house, getting the trucks, getting the trash, getting parking kind of out of sight, out of mind is, is, it's a great feature. And then finally, we have this, this view from one of the residences up at level six, I believe. This is one of the units that is probably furthest, deepest into, into zone of phase one of the project. As you can see, even from this distance from the river, there are just spectacular views of the bridge, of the river and of downtown. You're overseeing the amenity spaces, you're being embraced by both buildings on either side. The city comes alive. We talked again about the accessibility of the city. It's very prominent in this view. And we just think it could be just a lovely, lovely project, a lovely place to live, a lovely place to visit. And that's all we have for you tonight. I'd like to open the floor if you haven't, if anybody has any questions.
Appreciate that presentation. I'll turn it back to the commission to see if there's any questions. But we also have, have to open a public hearing really quick. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there are any requests to speak cards, they'll be handed over to me. But if there are not, there is still time to do so over on the side of the counter on your, on your left. So with that, I'll leave the public hearing open, bring it back to the commission for questions. We'll start on my right. If you're ready, Commissioner Austin, and we'll start on our left.
We'll start with you.
All right, Commissioner Sternfeld.
I have a very silly question. I mean, it's remarkably silly given the presentation you just gave. The, the outdoor space, can you, you spoke a lot to the buildings and the approach and the circulation. But can you, can you just speak actually to some of the design thought behind the space in the middle here that we're looking at in this final slide?
Right, right over here, certainly, yeah. You know, we talked about the building's kind of embracing this idea of an amenity space, the urban resort. What's beautiful about this property is that we have space. We have the ability to plan the resort or plan the, the project like a true resort in an urban context. So we want to create a beautiful garden, a multi-purpose garden, if you will. Having the ability to be flexible with these spaces was, was important to our team. And so what we have here is we have a lawn that is open to guests and residents alike. This could be a place for just afternoon lounging, reading a book, playing with your kids, playing with your dog. Both hotel guests and residences can use it, it's open for everyone. Just beyond that, we have our pool. There'll be a series of chaise and umbrellas and a few cabanas over there. We have a little bathroom hut over here that is open for a multitude of uses. Pool, visitors can use that restroom, the visitors to the lawn. And then anybody who's hanging out over here, this is some, this is additional outdoor food and beverage seating. So we have cafe seating over here, and then we have more bar-like seating over here. And then here, at level about 16 feet above grade, this is our outdoor function space. So we'd have grass turf up here overlooking, have some natural planting around the edge, try to disguise the railings a little bit. You know, those who want to be in the urban context but have a resort, naturalistic photos in their wedding can, can achieve that up here. We're going to disguise the railings with fountain grass or other elements, natural elements there. Then here's our pre-function space, it's more of a glass volume that overlooks all of this.
Okay, so here's the silly question part. Is the pool being rectangular a specific design choice?
It was.
Can you, can you just speak to it? I'm just, I, I see so much angle and thought into every move and then I kind of just saw this rectangular pool that just seemed very simple and so I...
Well, sometimes simplicity is, is the name of the game when we're going to design. You know, we talked about the sophistication, the elegance of both the planning and the architecture. We explored options of oval pools or more, you know, amorphic, naturalistic-looking pools. pools, but we felt that the simplicity of the rectangular pool with the long edge facing downtown would afford the most amount of people to lay there or sit against the pool edge lounge and look out at the skyline.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate you indulging me on it.
No worries.
It feels like a very silly thing to ask out loud.
Not at all.
But if I'm at the point where I'm asking about the pool, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'll be happy to answer more silly questions.
Any other city questions, Commissioner Sternfeld?
That is the only one for this item.
Awesome. Commissioner Berner.
All right, well, I'm about to make Commissioner Sternfeld feel really good about his silly question because I have a silly question, well, maybe a silly comment. I'm thinking you should name the development project West Sac Best Sac. Just an idea.
West Side Best Side.
But, okay, so now my serious questions. You didn't really talk about parking and the underground garage, but there are going to be 198 spaces, is that correct? So you'll have some of those spaces dedicated for EV charging and EV spots?
And we also are providing bike parking opportunities down there as well.
Have you guys thought about car sharing? Having some sort of car sharing service or teaming up with some service that would reduce the number of cars being parked there, just from a sustainability standpoint?
I'm going to defer to our development team over here.
With respect to this specific project, we have not yet figured out what our full parking strategy will be. But when you look to the other areas in the Bridge District, we're definitely trying to implement traffic reduction models and to create alternative modes of transportation so people don't have to use their cars.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the units themselves, the residential units, will, I think I read they'll have natural gas, will they be outfitted for natural gas?
No.
No, okay, so it's all electric. Okay, SB 1000, awesome. And then will you have, will you guys have any units dedicated for low-income residents?
No.
We'll be paying the in-lit fee in this case.
Okay. That, thank you for answering all of my questions.
Thanks, Commissioner Berner. And also just a point for the commission, I think, just to follow up on that question that I'll pass on to Commissioner Sablon. But I think the project does a really good job in the transportation system and also the pedestrian bicycle facilities. I know the EIR, or the addendum to the Radley's Landing Environmental Impact Report talks about some of the things that you guys plan to do to help with the reduction of vehicular traffic, things that include parking facilities, bicycle facilities that, oh, I mean, sorry, services onsite, sale of transit passes, shuttle service, carpool, vanpool, you mentioned, I think those are important particularly to that specific area. So just wanted to add to Commissioner Berner's comment, I think that's a very important point and something that looks like you guys, it's pretty much well-thought-out in terms of a plan in place to reduce vehicular traffic through that area. And I have questions about that, I think, when it comes to me, but just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sablon.
So I just had a quick question on the rooftop lounge. I didn't, did you go over that in the presentation?
Yeah, it's in the plan and it's in the section. It's located right here.
Okay. Is that going to be accessible to the public or just for guests?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
And then another thing was, I heard Mr. Friedman dropped Zen and Urban Lounge, and the first thing I thought of was an Amsen. So I don't know if you guys have thought of hot tub, cold tubs? I think that would be a great offering to the community.
And I'm sorry, but we do have a hot tub adjacent to the pool, given just the site. I mean, we are afforded a fair amount of space in our amenity space, but we felt that dedicating a larger area to the hot tub, as opposed to both offerings, was our preferred use.
So I was thinking of, do you know, like, hot tub, cold tub soaking? So you go from like 40-degree tub to 100-degree tub, community rates, that'd be, yeah. But not offered. Okay, thank you.
Not at this time, but thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sablon. Commissioner Austin.
I was trying to let Mr. Sternfeld provide some additional comments, seeing as I think on the planning commission, you will probably be looking at this development more than any of us once it's developed. So in any case, thank you very much. It was a really thorough and excellent presentation, and thank you, Mr. Friedman, for continuing to invest in West Sacramento. I think that you've really given an ambitious vision to us in West Sacramento and have delivered, and I think that's really impressive. I also want to recognize that this development has been a long time coming, and it was one of those many projects that was, that fell, I imagine, victim to the recession and probably some risk aversion on the part of the financing and development community. So I'm happy to see this come forward. I'm hoping that we can support this and make this as painless as possible. So my questions then, again, really excited. I actually kind of want to do a show and tell and pass that board around at some point.
Oh, we can, I mean, they're Velcro, you can rip them off.
Hand them out. But I have questions that aren't related to material, so that's good. So first question is around height. So I'm curious if you, and this might be a question for the development team, if you want to talk a little bit about the decisions around the height and density, I wonder, could we go higher? Was it a matter of kind of articulation for forthcoming development to the west of this property or to the ziggurat or from other considerations? I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
I think that there were both design and financial considerations. When you go above 75 feet as the top occupied floor, you get into a different building type, as you know, and you begin to evoke a different cost structure. And we felt that it was important to be able to make these homes affordable to a broader group of people. The other thing is, when you think about just the way the two buildings frame the outdoor space, there's a really nice relationship between height and openness. We were afraid if we went much higher, given that configuration, people would be oppressed by the building heights. So we actually think the proportions are really graceful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. And then the only other question that I have really is around kind of, there's certainly the visitors who are visiting the hotel, we have the residents who are living there, but I also wonder if you could, maybe we can kind of think through, what is this experience going to be like for people who are just going on the River Walk Park, maybe just cruising over Tower Bridge? And I also want to make sure that people don't kind of have, feel sort of like left out or excluded, because one thing that I've really liked again around the barn is that, you know, we don't have fencing, you know what I mean? Like, it's very light, so even if you aren't a patron there, you feel part of it.
Right.
So I think that you did a really good job of describing on this side, and I think it's striking that fine balance because there are environmental concerns, there are safety concerns, and so, you know, kind of trying to make it feel welcome while not, I don't want a giant, beautiful, expensive structure being built and residents, and even not even just West Sacramento residents, just people who come and visit and feeling like, well, that's not for me. They want me to not be here. And so I wonder if you want to talk a little bit more about that.
Certainly, certainly, yeah. And we touched base a little bit about the balance and the human scale of this little planter edge that we have here at the pool terrace and the rest of the amenity spaces. And though we have a gate over here at the private residences, when we go down, when we're not seen here, this was a nighttime rendered shot, we would see lights over here, we see fire pits going on, we see dancing water reflections. This would be a very active and inviting zone, they'd be bringing people down to that corner to experience the canopy of the trees, the view of the bridge, and you're right there, I mean, there's already a little bit of a public plaza that's right there. So we felt that that was the spot that we would invite, you know, that's where the more inviting entry point is. So even though visually, there's no wall, there's no fence, there's no monster barrier there, and you have that visual connection, when we get down to the more public offerings of the food and beverage outlet, that's where everybody comes in and enjoys what we're producing.
That's great, and I appreciate that. And so I think you've answered some of the questions or concerns that I've had. And you, I'm sure, have done your homework and know, River Walk Park, I mean, two years ago, when I asked our Parks Department about it, they said, you know, we have pretty much every weekend in the summer booked. I mean, this area is booked.
Yeah.
And so you are going to have all sorts of different types of groups, you know, festivals, community celebrations utilizing the space directly adjacent to this. So anyway, so thinking, so continue to work with your landscape architects and think through the articulation with the community because you want to invite people but also help people who live there and visit there feel safe.
It's a delicate balance, absolutely.
It is, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Leonard.
Yes, with the, on the hotel component, can you talk a little bit about the durability of the wood grain louvers and how that holds up over time?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I can't even pass this around.
Show and tell, let's do this.
All right, very good. Okay.
So, and I can...
So it'll be kind of sticking out of the building like this. Fun. Pass it around.
So we want to do our best to utilize materials that invoke the natural fibers and feeling and warmth of a real wood material. However, the maintenance of that...
Right.
...is very challenging. So fortunately, we live in a day and age where technology has advanced, these products that, you know, take out a lot of the material need to go through and maintain it at a level where it's cost-effective.
Right.
So what we have here is a couple of samples. The sample that you're holding right there is the proposal for the vertical wood louvers. It's a synthetic product, be easily attached to the building from a distance, nobody's touching it, but from a distance you get the feeling of wood. And then the other sample that's going around is our proposition for the similar material or material like that for the wood siding or the wood-like siding.
Okay.
So those are the two.
Woodish.
Woodish.
Yeah, okay.
And then both of those wood elements would be similar color and grain.
They'd be this color, green?
No, no, it'd be more like the louver that we saw. To us, that's a little too orange. We prefer this more natural-looking, almost walnut color over here. So we'd use the same material palette for both, or sorry, the same material or color for those two wood features, thus increasing the bond between the two buildings, but in a subtle way.
Okay. And then with the, I think you had on the floor plates, either of the hotel or the residential, where do you have the metal on the edge?
Yeah, so you can see right here in the hotel, it occurs at the floor line.
Okay.
It's the idea of accenting each level, breaking up just the mass of the building.
Sure.
So that would be like a brick metal or aluminum or something along the lines of that. And that color and that profile would be the same as what we're seeing right here in the foreground in the residence.
So does that, will that metal over time, will there be any staining of the concrete underneath it?
No.
Will there be any rust?
No, absolutely not.
Will it develop a patina or anything like that?
No, no, it could be powder coated. It's not intended to be copper and patina. It's not intended to rust.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you. Those are my only questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonard. Commissioner Avu.
Yeah, a comment and a couple of questions. I really appreciate that the plan is to keep the heritage trees. They're just beautiful, they're massive, and it would be a horrible shame to have to cut them down, but it's fantastic that you're actually incorporating them into the landscape design.
Yeah.
I think that's great. Is the plan to utilize solar panels at all?
Not at this moment. Excuse me? Yeah, we don't have enough space at the roof. With the mechanical systems that we have, unfortunately, we don't have the surface area to accommodate them.
Okay. And what exactly are the plans for Phase 2? Has that been considered yet or...
We haven't advanced that part of the project just yet.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Avu, just really quick, I also appreciate you guys' presentation and thoughtfulness into the project. As I mentioned, I think for me, it was important, not just the design, but also the transportation system, the traffic circulation was important. One of the things that we have talked about on this commission, particularly within the Washington Square kind of district, is activating Third Street. And we talked a lot, even when the CalSTRS project came before us, about how that specific project would activate that block, for example, right, on the street side, on the Third Street side. And it seems like this project does a really good job at activating the Tower Bridge walk, kind of the walkway area and kind of riverfront area. What are the thoughts on the design facing Third Street? And how do you see that helping to activate that block? And also, you know, going with the flow of what CalSTRS plans, CalSTRS plans to have on that, on the next block as well, with a retail, I think it's a cafe at the bottom as well. You know, we don't want it to be dark one block and then activate the other.
Right.
So what are the plans to, and the thought process behind activating the riverfront component like you're seeing here, but the design to activate kind of Third Street as well?
Well, like we said to Commissioner Avu's point, you know, the Third Street facade hasn't been developed because it's a second phase of the project. And as this whole district, you know, both the Washington District and the Bridge District develop over time, the wants and needs are going to evolve and change. And when we get to the point where we are developing the second phase of the project, you know, we'll take all those elements into consideration of what the community is looking for at that location. So unfortunately, I can't answer that question at this moment.
And I'm sure, I mean, there are other things that are going to go on in that area that are going to help activate just the entire Washington Square, or not just Washington Square, but just the Washington area. Yes, so appreciate that, that was one of my comments. And I think the rest of my colleagues...
Chair Castillo, just for a moment of clarification, once the Phase 2 project, you know, is developed and conceived, we'll be coming back here in a similar design review effort to what we're doing tonight.
Okay, awesome, appreciate it. And I think there's already been comments made about the traffic circulation and bicycle facilities and things like that. I think that was one of my interests as well. I know I have, I do have a request to speak card and the public hearing is still open, but I'm going to go ahead and ask this question, and if Guillermo still wants to come up and ask this question, I think that'd be good. I think there's some question, there was a question in the public about homelessness. And as a former Capitol Yards resident myself, there's a lot of homeless that would kind of go through the facility and sometimes hang out at the pool in the middle of the night. And something like this, I can see kind of an invitation for, you know, individuals of the public to just come out and hang out. And one of the concerns I feel that some of the local residents may have that live in the area is homelessness, and if there's a plan to address kind of the security plan or something to address that issue. So I'll go ahead and let you answer, but if there's other questions or any other comments that Guillermo would like to make, feel free to come up after his answer.
If I could, we're certainly very conscious of the issue, and I'd just like to take this chance to say that I think that the city of West Sacramento has done a very effective job. It's not perfect, but, you know, very, very responsive, you know, to property owners in terms of dealing with that. You know, going back to some comments that Commissioner Austin made before about access and privacy and sort of making the place feel welcome but at the same time secure, we're really trying to straddle that line and, you know, the whole issue of how we deal with homelessness is part of that. We will have onsite security to address the issue.
Thank you.
May I also just take this one chance, because I don't know if I'll have a chance to come back up again, to correct an oversight. I didn't introduce my team. I'd like to introduce...
Or myself.
Or myself. You know, Gurjit Ture from Fulcrum and Randy Koss. Gurjit has been the person who has spearheaded many of the developments that I mentioned before, the residential projects in the Bridge District. And Randy is the lead person at Fulcrum on this project and who's really spearheaded the conceptualization and the interface with the design team. And finally, Ms. Allen mentioned at the very beginning, an addition to the staff report with respect to further design review. If I might suggest one, a one-word amendment to that, as she stated when she was presenting this, significant changes to the massing or the building footprint would need to come back for further review. The language itself just says any changes, and if it's acceptable to you, I would prefer to say any significant changes would come back for further review. Thank you.
Before you sit down, can I clarify... Before you sit down, can I clarify? Were you talking about the first line would read, should the project require any removing minor and replacing it with?
My apologies. I should have been more clear. The very last sentence says, "Any changes to the building footprint or massing shall still require approval of the City Council." It's possible that there'll be minor changes to either of them. So I would just like to add some language that says, "Any significant changes."
Thank you very much. And then Mr. Mitchell, if you could consider some alternatives for Planning Commission to consider, that would be excellent.
Staff would be okay with that change as suggested by Mr. Friedman if it's okay with the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any other requests to speak cards. Guillermo, is that, okay, awesome. I'll bring it back to the commission. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Get back to the commission for any deliberations, and then we'll go ahead to vote. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Thank you. It's brilliant. Like, I don't, I don't know what else to say. We, I've sat through a lot of presentations, a lot of, well, we've done a lot of design reviews in the last five years I've been on this commission, and this by far was the best presentation of a product that, you know, has been before us ever. So kudos to you, sir, for putting together and the team and the design, but also just the thought and the care put into the project by Mr. Friedman and his team. I love it. Like, I fell in love with it as you were talking about it. It was like this, it was a feeling I was getting as you spoke to it. And that doesn't happen very often when you're describing something that's so kind of conceptual still. But you guys just did a really amazing job of bringing it to life. And I think it's a fantastic project for the city and is really going to just continue to propel that area of town, both, you know, right, right between the Bridge District and Washington and kind of move it forward in a lot of ways. So I think everything's about it is amazing. And I just want to thank Mr. Friedman and the Teal family for coming together and bringing this project forward, because I think it's a game changer for that parcel. And I don't think you could have possibly come up with a better thing to do on that piece of property than what you've presented tonight, so.
Thank you, and it was.
A little gratuitous, I'm sorry, but I rarely feel that strongly about it.
We'll take it. But it was a true team effort. I mean, you know, from landscape to interiors, obviously led by the development team and our design team, was quite large and a lot of thought went into this. So I'll be happy to go back to our office and share your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Berliner.
So this, as Commissioner Sternfeld says, this is pretty awesome. I know that you guys paid a fee that instead of having low-income units, but we're having a really hard time with it. But other than that, everything looks really good.
For clarification, Commissioner Berliner, should that option be desired by the applicant that would end up having to be approved by the City Council?
Thanks.
Commissioner Sablon.
Thank you for your presentation. There was definitely a lot of detail that went in, not just to the presentation, but selecting the team, design team, your great development team. I'm excited to see it come to fruition. I'm looking forward to seeing what Zen Urban Resort looks like here in West Sacramento. And I didn't see it in the write-up or I missed it. Is, when is this expected to be done? Do you have a timeline for this?
Forty-one months, or twenty-one months?
Hi, Randy Koss. I'm with Fulcrum. Our goal, it's a lofty one, is to start next summer. If we're able to do so, be completed by summer 2022. It'll be a race with us and CalSTRS maybe.
Thank you.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes, I said earlier, this is a really excellent presentation. And Commissioner Sternfeld, the only other presentation that I've seen on this commission that has blown me away like that was the one for the barn, just so you know. It was just, it was poetic.
It's a tough, it's a tough act to follow.
Tough act to follow. So I just want to kind of share an anecdote. So my organization was fortunate to host a gathering of international urban design professionals, familiar with, just a couple of weeks ago. And we did a focus on the waterfront, and we started at your soon-to-be neighbor to the north, at the Ziggurat Building, and we ended at the barn. And I think that really, you know, we were trying to tell the story of Sacramento. We went all over, went to Davis and Winters and South Sacramento, and we just, we went all over. But we started and ended at the waterfront. And I just want to say that on behalf of West Sacramento and for our region in general, thank you for giving us something to be really proud of. I echo my fellow commissioners' questions and concerns about, you know, bikeability, walkability, green design, sustainable features. I encourage you to continue to push the envelope because, as we know, over the next year or two, new innovations are going to come out. So continue to push yourselves to make the, you know, the most sustainable, greenest building that you can make as this moves forward. And also to recognize some of the questions about housing. I mean, one of the things, again, I think it was a, one of the few fortunate consequences of the economic downturn, but the first development to go vertical in the Bridge District was a beautiful, affordable housing development designed by an award-winning architect. So that's pretty, that's pretty cool. So I'd like to continue to see more of that, that we are actually inclusive in regards to the housing component, and also just a sentiment of inclusion and welcomeness, because I think that's what the river city community is all about. So thank you for all your work. Thank you all, thank you, team, for all your work.
Commissioner Leonard.
Just echoing everyone else, I mean, seriously, this is gorgeous. And not so much in the vision that you guys have presented, but up here, we also, there's a sense of trust that it's in the right hands. And it's not a blind trust. It's not something that we just say, well, they can do whatever they want because they are excellent. It's, we see what you've done all over town. And all of the staff speak very highly of working with you. And so in all regards, you know, it looks great, it feels great, and it's something you can really rely on. And that's important for all of us who live here, to see this change the way it is and to be stewards of that change. It's a, it's a point of pride. And so thank you very much for designing something and for allowing us to trust enough in what you're doing here. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Vu.
Yeah, I just echo what everyone else has said. This is a great project, and it's a great project for West Sacramento and really put us on the map and West Sac, Best Sac, right? Now, I think, no, it's a great balance between urban, but at the same time also being removed from that, you know, the hectic busyness of an urban space. So I think this is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, some of the projects that have put West Sac on the map are projects that have been led by Mr. Friedman. So thank you for that. And I think you said it in your opening comments, that this project has the ability of transforming the waterfront. I think it will transform the waterfront. And I'm looking forward to not only seeing this come to life, but also seeing what other plans, you know, we have for the rest of the waterfront next to the barn as well. So with that, thank you again for the amazing presentation. Definitely brought it to life. I felt like I was experiencing some of the, some of the things you were talking about there. Any questions or any other further comments from the commission before we bring up, before we entertain a motion?
Do you need to close a public hearing?
What's that?
Did we open?
I did, I closed a public hearing, yeah. So with that, is there a motion to approve this, to, is there a motion for this project?
I move to approve this project per staff recommendation with a modification to condition number six specifying significant changes.
This has been a motion by Commissioner Austin. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vu. You will have a chance to vote. Yeah, aye. All those in favors, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. For anyone who is in the audience or watching at home, this matter right now is scheduled to be heard before the City Council on December 11th.
Awesome. With that, we'll move on to item number three. Give a minute just to collect some of the items. Thank you. Move on to item number three, Presentation and Discussion on the Proposed Draft Landscape Development Guidelines and Consideration of Resolution 1910 PC, Recommending Approval of the Proposed Guidelines. Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Williams.
Yes, good evening, chair members of the commission. Item before you tonight was considered and continued at the Planning Commission meeting in September. We received a lot of really good comment and feedback at that meeting. And we're before you tonight for your consideration of the updated landscape development guidelines. So I'll wait for the PowerPoint to get loaded up here. So the guidelines are an existing document that was last modified in 1993, and it is incorporated by reference in the city's zoning code. The existing document has generally worked well over the years. However, an update is needed to implement General Plan 2035, Goals and Policies Related to Sustainability, Climate Resiliency, and Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. The existing document has sections on parking, streetscaping, land use screening, and the new document retains these sections and also includes new chapters for stormwater management, low-impact development, tree preservation, and updated planting and irrigation standards, just to name a few. The guidelines apply citywide and provide a basic framework for designing landscape areas within private development projects. They apply to both new commercial developments and residential subdivisions, as well as major expansions and renovations of existing buildings. They do not apply to single-family homes after the subdivision has been built. They also don't apply, in some cases, to planned development overlay areas and specific plans or areas where there are vested rights. So in areas like Southport Business Park, SIP, or the Bridge District, those are areas where these guidelines don't apply unless those documents reference the landscape development guidelines. And in that case, they'd be the existing document. So there are some major differences between the document proposed tonight and the existing document, and this is what the Planning Commission requested more information on at the last meeting in September. This document is less prescriptive. There are more should statements. They're not, the existing document has a lot of must statements. You must do this, you must do that. There's not a lot of flexibility. This document has a lot more flexibility. And there is a compliance table on page two that identifies different words, and one's required and one's not, the other one's not required. So the site amenity point schedule has been removed. That's in the existing document. The new document has low-impact development and stormwater management chapter. The new document has an updated irrigation and stormwater management chapter as well. And lastly, the landscape planter strips have been revised in this new document. I'll go more into that later in the presentation. So changes, there have been some changes for the document before you tonight compared to what was before you in September. We received a lot of good feedback in September, so we revised, we did track changes in the document. So if you're looking through attachment one, those are noted as track changes. So I'll go through the major ones. We did about fifteen, twenty or so track changes, and I'll go through the big ones before you. So the first one is on page one, applicability. We changed that paragraph to read a little more clear. So now it reads, "The guidelines are incorporated by reference in the city's zoning code and apply to all new private developments that require approval by the city. Existing development with non-conforming site improvements shall be brought into compliance pursuant to Chapter 17.26 of the municipal code." And then another change, the note, is on page 10. We struck out O, section O, because it was a little redundant of a section in the zoning code, so we referenced the zoning code section. Moving along, on page 21, the streetscapes section, we, number, or section 5.1D, or actually, excuse me, 5.2D, where it says, "Only on collectors and arterials," we changed that, we got rid of that. So that way, local roads are now included as well. And then the next page, on page 22, this is the section on the local residential streetscape where we talked a lot in the last discussion about the different options. And we went through different options, and it seemed like the most unanimous decision was having the planter strip on one side that's enlarged, or having it on both sides with a little smaller planter. We went through at the last meeting, when this came before you, that we were having some challenges with the current cross-section. The landscape strip on both sides, they're too small to accommodate a good-sized tree, and they're also posing some issues with buckling sidewalks and maintenance issues. So in order to get a big street tree and be in the same right-of-way with, this is what we proposed. And so we codified that in the section E. So now it says, "On local residential roadways, trees should be planted in either a seven-foot, or seven or nine-foot wide landscape planter on one side of the street, preferably on the western or southern side for better shade coverage. If a seven-foot, it should be say foot right there, planter is selected, then the opposite side of the street must have a two-foot wide landscape planter for small shrubs and plants." So that would be, that would give developers the option of either doing this one or the previous one where you have a larger one and larger planter strip on one side.
Just one comment. Commissioner Sablon, do you have a question on this specific?
Oh, my question is yours.
Okay, no, no, I was, I saw you had a question, you were going to ask questions.
Oh.
Just since we're on this slide.
Yeah, I just, so was it intended to be should and not shall? Because the strikeout was shall, but.
Yeah, it was intended to be should. And if you go back to the compliance table, should is required unless there's reasons why not to do it. So this still retains flexibility. But there are certain cases where it might not be, if you have a small lot development really dense, it might be hard to do this.
Okay.
So moving on to page 26, there was a comment at the meeting about chain link fencing. So there is a section in the new zoning code that chain link fencing is not permitted in non-residential zones if it's viewable from the street. So we added that in and referenced the code section. So those were the major changes we've made since this document came before you last time. And that was based on comments we received both at the meeting and then also offline. We received some comments via email. So this concludes my presentation. We're looking for Planning Commission approval tonight of Resolution 19-10 PC, which recommends that City Council approve the landscape development guidelines before you tonight.
Thank you. Before, we have questions for Commissioner, from Commissioners, we do have one request to speak card on this item, so we can have Ms. Langford go ahead and speak now. That would be great.
Good evening. So I have a strong concern, especially after listening last night at the council about the buffers between industrial and residential. And I know you guys know, because they spoke before you at the last meeting, it's in your minutes, that area where that new building's going up. I find it interesting that in here it says cyclone fencing is not supposed to be used. We went through that whole code enforcement thing too, or cyclone fencing, and that's the answer that those people were given last night, that cyclone fencing will be put up to try to buffer the industrial look that they have to look out onto now of that building that is going up, that vines will grow up on it.
Which, I'm sorry, which building are you talking about, just so we can have a clear sense? I wasn't, I didn't hear last night's presentation.
Which building is it, Dave? He knows exactly.
Yeah, Ms. Langford is referring to a discussion last, that was at last night's council meeting regarding a new industrial building that's under construction out in the southwest portion of Southport Business Park, just on the north side of the Detention Basin. There was a considerable discussion about that matter last night's council meeting.
Thank you.
So on page 25, it says no chain link fencing. It also says in K, "Commercial industrial projects located next to residential and/or residential zoned, that they will put up solid masonry." I'm going fast because you chewed up a couple of my minutes. So anyway, that's concerning in here. Also, the Southport Framework Plan speaks to Also, the Southport Framework Plan speaks to that, on page 40 of the Southport Framework Plan in items 22 and 24, it also addresses that issue. Are the Southport Framework Plan and the Resolution 0663 being considered when reviewing these type of things? I'm all about preserving the oak trees, very, I have nine on my property myself. And it saddens me that some of the developers are getting away with not abiding by that, so I think that's a very strong thing that we need to protect in here. And also about irrigation, I know this is not the purview, but I always think of it, and I never get a chance to ask anybody, so I'll put it on the record. When it's raining, because it says in here that they'll make sure that when it's raining, the irrigation won't be on, how many times do we drive by and see irrigation going when it's pouring down rain? So that's in here. But are we going to abide by it or make other companies or the city abide by that so that we're not wasting water? And let me make sure. Sorry, I kind of jumped around. Anyway, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Langford. All right, bringing you back to the Commission, questions to staff regarding the plan. I know there's an opportunity in the past few weeks to comment on this, and some did via email and reached out to the staff, and some changes are reflected in this document. But are there any further comments or questions regarding this specific plan at this moment? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, and I apologize, I know I'm behind the eight ball, and I missed the meeting, the last meeting where we started discussing this, so just two questions. I'll ask them both, and you can respond. One is the other bookend of the irrigation question, which is water efficiency. So, you know, we are, as Mr. Tully knows, in a time of climate change, and we have these kind of, you know, floods and then droughts. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit to address my question of, you know, what are some of the energy efficiency plans? For example, if we're having landscaped areas, are we, you know, picking very drought-tolerant landscaping? I know that we've actually pulled out landscaping and had to redo that. And maybe you could also answer the question around irrigation, so that's question one. And then question two is more of a plant question, which is, you know, it's my understanding that in some neighborhoods in here and then also just around the region, trees have been planted by developer, by developers, possibly also by the city, that just really aren't appropriate. They, their roots don't go deep, they go wide. Also, they have shorter lifespans, so you have trees, we have senescence after like ten years, when you would hope that a tree would grow longer than that. So if we could talk a little bit about, just generally, it doesn't need to be a ten-minute answer, it could be like a three-to-five-minute answer around water efficiency and also overwatering, what the kind of, you know, I guess, civil plans are. And then also, what, are we paying attention to the types of trees that we're planting so that we aren't worrying about sidewalks being pulled up, or trees needing to be removed and replaced?
Good evening, Commissioner and Councilmen. I'm Wendy Williams with the Community Development Department. And Seamus and I and several of our colleagues have been working really hard on updating this document. I also was involved heavily in instituting the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance that's been in effect since 2011. The state has had their water-efficient landscaping ordinance since 2010. And then the city came along in 2011, did a slightly more stringent version, and adopted our own water-efficient landscape ordinance. The water-efficient landscape ordinance does not prescribe the use of drought-tolerant plants. What it does, it encourages it through the use of a water budget, saying that you are only going to allow so much water that needs to irrigate the entire landscape area, and therefore, it's encouraging the low-use, the low-water-use plants through that type of system. So what we are seeing is it's very, very hard to put in a lot of turf and still meet that water budget. So especially with our subdivision developers, what you're seeing is a small piece of turf in their front yard, but mostly it's drought-tolerant plants and ground covers and trees. And that's how they meet their water budgets. That's been working really well for subdivisions that have developed under that weelo. We don't really see the overwatering anymore. In addition to the water budget, they're required to have the rain sensors, so they've been putting those individually on the individual houses. That helps to curb any overwatering. It's been working really well. We still occasionally see some overwatering issues on the older homes that were not subject to weelo. Regarding tree species, the Parks Department regularly updates the city's master tree list to add new and upcoming tree species that seem to be functioning really well, based on not only our own experience, but experience in the region. And we also occasionally delete trees from that same list that have started to become problems or have started to become very susceptible to local pests or that sort of thing. So that is regularly updated, generally on a yearly basis.
Thanks, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Leonard?
I like that the document integrates into a lot of the city's existing policies, like we love, that you just referenced in other parts of the municipal code and general plan policies. It guides people to places where you've really thought about those specifics in a very concentrated way that are, you know, the law of the land for the city. So rather than trying to reinvent those specific details, just threading everything back to and integrating with, you know, the brain damage that's already been done on some of those details. So even with low-impact development standards and even the sustainability plans. So just by making reference to the existing stuff that we've already worked through, I think this document is a helpful guiding tool. I don't know, I can't speak for anyone else for whether or not it has enough teeth, or if it has enough very clear, direct, prescriptive, actionable direction, I guess. But that's okay, it needs to be more suggestive so that people can learn how to meet it in the right way. And you'll have lots of staff discretion, and Planning Commission will have discretion in ensuring that the execution of those plans happens in accordance with all of our goals and policies. So I just feel like it does a great job of integrating those things together. And the way it's written now is, I think, an improvement over the first time we saw it, when it didn't, it just, it just felt a little off. But now it seems to integrate very well with everything, so thanks for the extra effort to get it to that point.
Thanks, Commissioner Leonard. Commissioner Vu.
Yeah, I have a comment slash question about trees and, you know, just them being just on one side of the street. I know, as a Planning Commission entity and, you know, as a city as a whole, we've been trying to push more toward being environmentally sustainable and resilient and, you know, efforts, you know, to incentivize minimizing car use as well. Now, is there really no other way that we can fit in, you know, trees on both sides of the street? Is it possible to maybe perhaps allow only parking on one side of the street? I know in neighborhoods around Linden Road, you know, street parking isn't allowed on one entire side of the street. So, you know, is that, you know, are we really thinking through, you know, all of our options when it comes to, you know, building up the canopy of West Sacramento?
So we did not put in an option for deleting parking on, say, one side of the street so that we could have wider planters on both sides of the street. As you can imagine, that starts to become even a, an even bigger issue, to talk about not putting in as much parking. So, and then it starts to snowball. So we would have to talk about that in a larger context, about parking and access and that kind of thing. We, so we didn't, we didn't go quite that far. That is still an option. But again, it would have to be discussed in a larger transportation and mobility context.
Yeah, and I think to build upon that, I think you raised a good point in your Commissioner view, and I think Wendy's right about some of the snowballing, potential snowballing effects if we start trying to mess with the streets and street widths and parking. But this is a, this is an area that I think we need to pay attention to and perhaps address through our work, upcoming work on the Climate Action Plan. Because much of what's coming out of the Mayor's Commission, for example, does get into the mobility matters and other things as the Commission, you know, has mentioned. So the larger context that Wendy's referring to, I think, could really come through our climate work, where we will be able to look at these things holistically, looking for carbon sequestration opportunities. The mobility stuff that has come out of the Mayor's Commission, in my view, really represents a real paradigm shift from what we have all known for essentially forever. And so as that unfolds, it will probably inform this particular topic as well. But I think that we need to be, do need to be looking at it broadly from a climate standpoint, and then what that, what mobility will mean in the future. So that, this topic, I think, is not going to go away. We're still supportive of these guidelines as they have now. They're substantial advance from what we've had since 1993, that we have been, haven't really struggled to still apply here all these years later. But I want to note that your point is well-taken, and then the larger context that Wendy's referring to could very well be the Climate Action Plan, which the Commission here will definitely be involved in as we get going on that in earnest, which actually starts tomorrow.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner Starfield?
Thank you, Chair Steel. First, thank you, city staff, because I sent a very, very, very long email with lots and lots of comments, and it was late at night, and so I'm sure tonally it was terrible. But I appreciate you taking them all and providing a response with feedback was fantastic also, because I learned some things as well. So thank you. I had one little question, and then I do want to go back to Commissioner Vu's point, because I'm still stuck on it. On page 31 of the document, when we're talking about commercial screening on ground plane materials, A9, there's a very specific requirement for outdoor refuse collection areas to be enclosed by either a masonry or concrete wall for all commercial uses. And I just, I'm wondering why that one's a, that's a shall, right? Yeah. Shall, and also why we didn't think about other types of construction? So for example, like, I don't know why this came to me, but the sale-ins, like fenced-in garbage area that looks nice and is nicely stained when no one spray paints it, is like, that works for me. Do we need to be so conscriptive to masonry and concrete blocks, or is there some flexibility there?
That has been our longstanding policy. The sale-in is a unique case because of the monitoring wells in the parking lot, they could not sink the foundations for masonry around that particular trash enclosure. Part of it is a security matter, and part of it is so that the, frankly, the garbage trucks, when they offload the dumpsters, don't destroy the enclosure. But the sale-in is a very unique case that, and that is also an interim enclosure until such time as those monitoring wells are removed.
Interesting. I just didn't know if we were boxing ourselves in by being specific on just these two types of building materials, especially as we get, like, more interesting development, modern development, coming in the future.
The zoning code also references refuse enclosures. We could add that section in right there to cross-reference to the zoning code, which has a lot more requirements for trash enclosures.
Oh. Well, that makes sense. Great suggestion. All right, so going back to the broader issue of the trees and alternatives, so Commissioner Vu, I don't recall if you were at the last meeting we were at, you were. So we brought up this idea then as well on this other alternative of, instead of forcing trees on one side of the road or the other, getting rid of a lane of parking. And I totally appreciate that it is perhaps a bigger discussion that involves more players that are in this meeting or at the room. But the document that's before us, and the policy that's in that document around it right now, would cut the numbers of trees we're planting in new residential development in half. It would reduce the amount of shade in those developments, it would increase the amount of heat island effect on the pavement, because those trees not only shade the pavement, but they also, in many cases, especially in these larger lots or smaller lots, shade the homes. So folks will have less shade on their home, which means greater energy efficiency costs. To me, this one little policy change is completely the opposite of the direction of all the climate work we're saying we want to do. And I have a very, like, I love what we've done, I think it's fantastic that we've updated a document from 1993. I completely agree with Commissioner Leonard, it's amazing, it's much better product, you guys worked really hard on it. But I would vote no on it tonight if that policy's in there, because I just don't agree with it. And so if we're not ready to have that discussion on, and be able to make a change on alternatives, then I would just recommend leaving it out, leaving E out until such a time when the climate work can commence and folks can come together. But I feel really uncomfortable approving a policy direction that would literally cut, you know, the trees in half, at least 1,500 homes to be developed in Southport in the future, and decrease the amount of shade and increase the energy costs for the homes around those areas, at the same time as we're kicking off a conversation about climate adaptation and what policies can we put in place to reduce those impacts. It just, it's completely counterintuitive to me. So I don't know how my other Commissioners feel. If they feel fine moving this forward, then I will be a very respectful and appreciative no vote to the work you've done because of that one item alone. But if there's wiggle room to be silent on that policy, or take it out of this policy for now and add it back in at a later time, or deal with it through the broader climate work, I'd be very much in support of moving this forward tonight. So that wasn't really a question more than it was a policy statement, I suppose, at this point. But, and I don't, so maybe to ask a question, are there any other alternatives you guys have thought about, other than the one we've brought forward in terms of getting rid of a lane of parking that might work?
Right. Again, though, we specifically tried to stick with ones that we could implement quickly without a lot of additional discussion. And the elimination of parking on one side is just, like I said, it needs so much more discussion from multiple other players, because now we're starting to talk about transportation and mobility changes with the removal of parking. So we tried to stick with different alternatives that we could implement, given the existing right-of-way, or we had the option of increasing the right-of-way in order to accommodate the additional landscape planner widths. So that's where we went, trying to get this done and implementable as soon as possible.
And I totally appreciate that. In the same, in the same breath, I think there's a lot of folks, young people, and a new generation, who would argue that going the route of figuring out the fastest way has led us to this place where we adopted a lot of poor policies that are impacting, you know, our planet. And so I would, I would very much advocate for the harder work here to try to figure out alternatives, even if it means harder conversations about how many street spaces do we need in a residential neighborhood for the once-a-month block party when someone invites people over? Because that's, I mean, this commission has approved residential apartment projects that were severely underparked, and yet, so I think there's some real interest here in saying, if the climate is important to us, I can deal with cutting some residential parking in new residential development. Maybe not all of it, maybe just on streets that are more one-way, and not like main arterials, or maybe main arterials like you have on that stretch of stone. that stretch of Stonegate, uh, between Linden and kind of going behind the high school where there's, there's no street parking. Um, there are other ways to look at this, and maybe it requires more planning and more detailed policy decisions. In some cases it's okay, in some cases it's not. But I, I feel like this is too big of a change with, with a significant impact, and I don't want to, I don't want to be short-sighted on it. Okay, I'm off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sternfeld. Uh, any comment from staff? I, I thought Mr. Tilly was going to say something. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm definitely, well, one, I'm exhausted. But two, I, I really, um, I, I agree with Commissioner Sternfeld's on this particular matter. And there's, there's trade-offs here. And thus far, at least from a staff level, we sort of identified three potential ways, you know, this can go, which is, as is presented, um, you know, get rid of the one lane of parking or just expand the overall right-of-way. Every one of those has trade-offs, um, to them. Um, expanding the right-of-way means, you know, just that much more land is available, um, just, and, you know, houses are further apart. Obviously, getting rid of parking may have some pros and cons, and going in this way, um, has some pros and cons as well. So, uh, I think what I would suggest to the Commission, if, if the Commission is generally okay with the balance of the document, um, I'd like for us to potentially carry those three options forward to the Council for further discussion, noting that, um, they won't be able to protect, potentially, you know, make and do whatever, accept whatever option all in one fell swoop. Um, but we, I think it would be best for us to understand where the, where the Commission is at with those, sort of those three options, so we can have some further dialogue on that, in particular with the Council, because they do bring up broader, broader issues. And, uh, we don't have all that analysis in front of you, for example, of what, what it would mean if we got rid of half the park, you know, parking on half the street. We don't have that in front of you tonight. So, um, I, you know, the balance of this document is a significant advance from where we have been. And so I don't want us to lose sight of that. But I am sensitive to this, uh, matter, especially with all the work we have been going in climate-wise, um, you know, and, you know, which is a, you know, front and center topic for us. So, um, if it, the Commission were amenable to that, uh, we could, uh, advance this, um, with, of, of those three options, what we think, what the Commission believes would be the most favorable option. Uh, we can get some additional policy consideration from the Council, given that all three of those options bring about bigger policy questions than, than merely, you know, what kind of trees or landscaping to go in. Um, and then this can be, that element of it perhaps could have some further consideration once the Council could weigh in on the upper policy level matters of climate, of mobility, of parking, et cetera. So, um, that would be my suggestion to the Commission tonight, um, is to allow us to advance this document, advance those three options with the Commission's, um, favorite option, so we can have that discussion with the Council.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Before we, um, turn it back to St- Commissioner Sternfeld, if he has any comments to that, we'll go ahead and, uh, Commissioner Berliner, really quick, and we'll go down the line.
I have a lot of thoughts right now, so I'm gonna pass at this moment.
Commissioner Sablon?
Uh, so, yeah, just kind of echoing Commissioner Sternfels and, uh, Commissioner Vu. At, when this came before the Commission, at the last, the last time it was before the Commission, that, that was also my preference to maintain, um, trees on both sides. And I, I appreciate the difficulties in trying to do that and balance everything. Um, so if we did the attachment three, is that one of the options you were referring to, to advance?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sablon, I was conferring with Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, so you said you would recommend that we move forward with it and advance it with the three alternatives stating our preference was?
Yeah, that was sort of partially why we phrased the recommended action, um, that way. Um, you know, special item number two in your recommended action, because, uh, we know ultimately that there's some policy considerations here that really need, uh, Council consideration. Uh, but we'd like to carry forth, uh, your, um, recommendations on the document as a whole. But if there are matters that are outstanding still that we, at least the Council, the Commission feels, they may need, want some Council direction on, uh, we still, we have that opportunity, you know, still at this juncture, um, to take that to the Council. And then depending where the Council's at, may, we may return on this matter, or we may leave it for the climate work. Um, so there's a couple ways it's gonna go. I just, you know, I wouldn't want to lose the balance of this document while this matter is adjudicated, because depending on which way it goes, it, you know, could have some other ripple effects.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Sablon. Commissioner Austin?
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate the comments from my, my fellow commissioners. And, so one of the reasons that this wasn't on my radar is my understanding, and I think my understanding might be erroneous, my understanding is that we're trying to focus on the landscaping. When, so if, if, if you're looking at either private development or municipal development, you don't start with landscaping, you start with their proposed development, and then you move into, y- you don't even get to landscaping for quite some time. You're looking at, you know, streets and, and turn, you know, turn around, and you're looking at a number of things. And so I think that my question is, would mobility planning cap, you know, a climate action plan, um, you know, what we've put into the general plan and zoning ordinance, would tho- those would supersede this? Or is it because this is new where it would supersede? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, in what, like, what's kind of the order of operations here would really help me understand?
We can't supersede general plan. Um, that's the foundation, bedrock for everything we do. Uh, so, and this is a, really an implementation measure of general plan, be since this, the landscape guidelines are incorporated by reference into zoning code. Um, zoning is the day-to-day implementation of general plan. So, we absolutely need to be consistent with general plan, you know, going forward. Um, but of course, the general plan is general, and now we're trying to get a lot more specific here. But, um, the policy statements and the general plan really what needs to be, what guides us on, you know, this particular effort as long, along with, you know, most everything else that we do here at the Planning Commission. Uh, so Seamus in his report, and along with Wendy, have, you know, referenced the general plan policies that we believe are applicable to this particular effort, and they're meant to help, help the Commission, um, review the landscape guidelines in context, um, under these. But I do believe that, um, this matter of the streetscape is, is one that may need additional attention. And I'm, I'm trying to see if there's a, if there's a way for the Commission to advance this, uh, with that element still there, and we can get some additional direction from Council about where, how they would want to go on it, because those are kind of, you know, fairly, I would say paradigm shifts, um, in how we do things. And, uh, and there's other consideration, like, you know, tree maintenance, for example, is expensive. Uh, so there's a couple, you know, there's a few other, you know, considerations here that we don't have before you on that particular topic right now. Um, so we can proceed any which way the, the Commission would want to, to go. Um, we would prefer to finish this sooner rather than later, but there is no official clock ticking on us either. Um, but we are running out of meetings for the year also.
So, yeah, so, so this is, this is where I'm at. Um, what I think of is, I was reminded of a time when it was, again, at the development in the Bridge District, and they needed to get, I think, like a variance or something, because they were not gonna have landscaping. Uh, it was, there was something related to this. And my point is, I don't want to make it easy to do suburban-style development where you have like a landscape strip and parking, and that should not be easy and infill be hard. It should be the opposite. It should be, right, and I think, I think that my commissioners are echoing a fairly similar statement, that we should have shade cover and carbon sequestration and active transportation prioritized over the width of our roads. Um, and so what I'm saying, though, is that the lands- this plan does not dictate streetscape, like the size of our roads, the utility of the roads. It dictates the landscaping. So with that, I would be comfortable, under that premise, advancing this. I am cautious about advancing a document that, um, rewards, uh, or makes, again, kind of traditional green, green-filled suburban development easy and infill development hard. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know of an answer on that yet, but I'm willing to kind of listen and, and continue to dialogue.
Yeah. Our current guidelines, historically, we have used them primarily in commercial and industrial, you know, type projects. Um, the urban areas, you know, Bridge District, Washington, they both have their own specific plans that, you know, detail how those areas are supposed to go. And we're working on Washington now, and, um, you know, hopefully we'll be bringing some more of that forward to the Commission here in the next couple of months. Um, single-family residential, you know, which is primarily being built in Southport, you know, there's a Southport framework plan, which admittedly is a bit dated now, but provides some general guidance. So, this document, although as much as it's really advanced from where we were before, it's, it's not gonna be a radical, you know, change, you know, either. So, uh, it's certainly more, can, much more contemporary than where we have been. But I think the general directions we've been going, um, you know, will remain that way, again, particularly in our commercial and industrial sectors.
Okay. And, so, I'll, I'll also leave with, with this piece, because I referenced it earlier. We don't need any planting strips, I'm just saying. So it's, it's kind of like a nice-to-have. It, I think it's a nice amenity. But, I mean, it ha- it comes with its own challenges. At a minimum, someone's gotta maintain it. I mean, so even if we do, don't replace turf with more drought-tolerant landscaping, it's, it's still fairly challenging. So, I'm, I mean, I'm still comfortable with the document, but I, I think that my commissioners raised incredibly valid concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Leonard?
Uh, no comment on anything else related to the document, just on what we do tonight and how we structure a recommendation that has some merit to it and isn't just complete, completely weak, but also gives Council, um, our intent to, uh, to fix this streetscape problem. I don't know how you word that, but, uh, I'm sure we'll figure it out here.
Commissioner Vu?
Is it not possible to do something as Commissioner Sternfels has suggested, where we vote on, you know, everything else in, uh, the recommendations minus, uh, the streetscaping?
I would, I would think that would be within your purview. Um, we would, if that were to be the case, we would certainly describe that, just at that action and why, for the Council, and, you know, seek some further input at that level, um, you know, from the Council, because those changes, whichever way we would go, if we went with any of them, uh, would have some other implications, uh, be broader than that. And we don't have a, a lot of analysis for you on that in the front of you tonight. Uh, but I think that would represent a compromise way to keep this moving, but still not, um, abandon the notions that we've heard tonight, uh, which I do believe are, um, valid.
And, oh, just a comment. Uh, no, the, the reason I'm struggling with this is because of the inconsistency that I've seen in the city, especially, you know, throughout Southport, where, you know, there's, along Linden, there's an, you know, the entire street there on the east side, um, on the east side of, of Jefferson. It's, you know, there's no parking. Even, you know, behind Linden, along Mallard, there's no parking, you know, so, you know, so, um, you know, so I'm struggling with that. And, you know, staff saying that, um, you know, there's, there are challenges toward, um, you know, mobility and, uh, you know, parking availability for residences, when, you know, there are examples in the city now where there are no street parking.
Wendy, could you kind of give us a, the Cliff Notes on the different types of streets and collectors and whatnot?
Right, yeah. So, uh, Linden in, uh, in that context is actually considered a collector, much like, um, say, Stonegate through, uh, the middle of the development there, south of, of Linden, is considered a collector. Uh, it, it, um, allows more, uh, through traffic, more flow. Um, on such a type of roadway, we don't put parking. Um, the parking is limited to the, um, the local residential roadways, which is what we're talking here with the, uh, the planner strips as well. Um, and the local residential, uh, roadways are the ones that have direct access to the, um, the homes. So the driveways, um, the, the sidewalks to get you to your front doors. Um, so there's, there's a difference in the type of roadway and whether we allow parking or not, which is why you don't see parking along Stonegate or Linden, but you do along the other, uh, local residential roadways.
Not necessarily. Um, no, there, the neighborhood behind Linden, you know, some streets don't have parking allowed either. Um, but, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Some of it may, it may also have to do with, if it's a local residential roadway, um, but it's a, uh, a smaller width, um, there may be no parking on one side, only parking on, on the other side. It's, it all shakes out in the development itself as well. Um, so that's all, um, part of the design process.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate the staff's work on, on this. I know there has been some improvements from, uh, last time it was presented to us to now. Uh, I also recognize the concerns of my fellow commissioners, and I, I would be supportive of, uh, compromise. Well, I don't want to hold this up. I think there's been a lot of work that has been done, and it's in a position where I think Counsel will be able to have a thorough discussion about it and also provide some additional guidance. Uh, but I also think that this issue of parking, it was discussed quite a bit at the last meeting, is an issue that should, that deserves more attention. And so I, I would be supportive of kind of holding this back, um, that, that portion, but advancing the document, um, as a whole to, um, Counsel and see if we could do some further analysis, uh, on how this would be, how, what an impact this brings, right? Because I think Commissioner, I mean, uh, Mr. Tilly's correct that this, there's a lot of questions that are unanswered, because we don't know, uh, as it relates to taking a whole strip of parking on one side or, you know, uh, and that's also a sensitive issue across the city as well. Uh, and so there has to be some kind of balance between both. But we won't know until we have more information, so I would be supportive of that. Um, I bring it back to, just really quick to Commissioner Berliner, because she didn't have a, uh, time to, uh, she didn't have questions at the time, but I know she has them now. Commissioner Berliner?
I think everyone sort of has echoed and re-echoed everything. I was thinking, um, one alternative would be to just, um, keep the fifty-six-foot, uh, of roadway width and just maybe, um, narrow the, narrow the, narrow the, uh, the lengths. There we go. That's what I was looking for. But, um, yeah, that would be my only suggestion to look at, if you have the, for the current alternative.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm coming late to the party, so I apologize for that. I think, as I'm understanding it, we're talking about page twenty-two, um, section five-point-four-E.
Yep.
Is the one that's, so my suggestion would be, I think, consistent with David's suggestion. The version that goes, if you were to push this forward to Council, you could substitute in something like the word "reserved" on section E, and the staff report could then explain to the Council, the original recommendation had been this language, Planning Commission raised these issues, we're looking for direction from Council. You know, your choices are, go with the language that was originally proposed, um, look at planting on both sides. But I think that that would give an opportunity for staff to then explain to the Council that, you know, planting on both sides has certain implications. Um, removing parking from one side has certain implications that have not been analyzed as part of this document. I do have a little bit of concern with a, with too dramatic a change at this point. You don't have an environmental document that specifically speaks to, for example, removing parking as a, as a design idea. I don't know that there is additional review that would be necessary, but we'd want to at least look at that. So I think, um, I think staff is supportive of taking out E and putting in a placekeeper there to just say, that's a topic that has been reserved, and then we'll take it to Council and give them options. And then my guess is they will give some direction to count, to staff, and then staff will come back to you, um, with that direction, if that makes sense.
Appreciate that, uh, suggestion. I would be fine with that, but I want to bring it back to our commis- colleagues to see any thoughts there. Commissioner Sternfeld, and then we'll come down the line.
Uh, that was, that was what I was hoping for. Uh, and what I had written down is kind of one alternative-
one alternative for, for moving this forward tonight. I mean, the thing that was tricky for me was we're being asked to pass resolutions saying we approve of all the content, and so when I didn't, that's where I was getting stuck. But if, if it can say "reserved" and we, and staff can bring the issue forward in a manner that includes the, the intent of this discussion, which, which is really to not box ourselves in and think more broadly about how we handle this issue, which I know, I'm seeing a lot of David headshaking, so I know he understands and gets it, and we're in agreement, so I appreciate that, then that works, that works for me.
Commissioner Berliner?
I'm totally fine with that.
Commissioner Sablon?
Sorry, I know everyone wants to go home, but I have a question, I think, related to Commissioner Austin's question on just the order of operations. So when, I haven't been on here for a development plan that's been brought before us, so at that point, when it comes before us, can we dictate how wide the streets are and how, what would be allowed, so that we can have the landscaping that we think's appropriate for a particular development? Or whether streets, yeah, parking shouldn't be allowed on one side, or?
Okay, I'll, I'll jump in, since I've already earned my pay by speaking. If I didn't speak, I wasn't gonna get paid, so. The city has standard specifications for things like street widths, and has designations of the type of street depending on where it is and what kind of traffic is expected. So I won't say that there's never any circumstance where you might be, you might have a project that proposes a slightly different street width. That would most typically come up, in my experience, in private streets, where they might be proposing a width that's something different. And even then, historically, the city's, I think, been reluctant to allow street widths that are, that vary too dramatically, because you still want to allow emergency vehicle access, and you have to have the right turn radii and all those sort of things. So, a street width is probably not a great example where there's a lot of discretion for how wide the street would be. There are other things that you'd have more discretion on.
Can I just underscore something that you said, because it harkens back to what I was saying earlier. Developers don't design their communities with, you know, the housing, the commercial and the roads after looking at the landscaping, they go the opposite direction. So what I'm saying is, is that this, you know, this is a kind of like what comes after looking at the street widths, and I also want to underscore that it's the policies that drive that. If they're coming to us, we're usually approving something else. We don't, we don't dictate street widths, landscaping typically, I don't know that I, except for, there was one time when we did have a private road, but, but does that make sense, that, that there's other things in place, and we should, we as a planning commission should really look at the policy documents that precede this and dictate active transportation, roadways, parking, et cetera, because those are usually accompanied by the proper vetting, the transportation engineering, and the environmental review? That's, that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm leaning towards approving it as it is, because I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little worried that we might be putting too much into this document that, that isn't there. So, I am comfortable with the recommendation that City Attorney said, and I'm also comfortable with moving forward with this document with, with our comments being included in both, to some degree, a summary of them being included in the staff report and staff presentation to the city council.
Any other comments? Commissioner Austin, any of the comments?
I'm sorry, I totally jumped the gun, but no, yeah, I'm good.
All right. Commissioner Vu? And I don't have any further comments. So with that, is any further discussion or motion to advance this to city council?
And with such enthusiasm, I don't know, who wants to take all this one? I'm not volunteering.
Since I'm the troublemaker. So, I'd like to motion that we approve Resolution 19.10 PC, recommending the city council approve the proposed draft landscape development guidelines update with marking section 5.4E on page 22. Is that right? As "reserved," and then sharing with the council our comments on the competing alternatives, pros and cons, and letting them have their policy discussion and decision on which direction that should go.
Very well said, Commissioner Sternfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leonard. Are those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is informal discussion. Any comments, discussion from Commissioners on?
I, I'll request that, that if, if, if staff is not prepared to go over kind of the, we've got a lot of holidays and vacations and closures coming up, so if you, if you have a sense of which planning commission meetings, if any, will be canceled between now and January, if you don't have an idea now, if you could email that out, that would be great.
Yeah, right, I know we will meet at our next meeting in November, and for now, I'm expecting we will meet on our first December meeting, and likely not the second December meeting right now.
Thank you.
Any other discussions from Commissioners?
Chair, I see you just, very quickly, Ms. Langford mentioned the council meeting last night, and public comment made regarding the, the project down in the Southport Business Park, which was also an item that was brought to us previously, and public comment, not needed for tonight, but at some point, if we could get an update on kind of the status of that issue, so that, I know I've been asked about it around town and didn't have any information. Would appreciate an update. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right, meeting adjourned.